Hello. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. First of all, is actions taken in closed session? Trustee Pendergast, our clerk?
No actions taken in closed session.
Okay. The invocation will be led by, will be spoken rather, by trustee Dack, and I will leave the pledge of allegiance.
So the month of September brings a lot of memories of our nation's history, especially in 2001. Terrible terrorist attack happened in our country. I was in elementary school when that occurred, and that amount of violence was something that really had an impact on my generation. And just this month, we've also seen a lot of violence occurring in our country. And it is always unfortunate to see people take that route. Here as an education institution, as a former teacher, I know what that fear looks like in a classroom when we do drills for intruder on our campus. So I just want to have a moment of silence for all those that have lost their lives this month. And now I'm going to move to our board president to give the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Okay, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it is now time for public comments. A couple of things. Each one, each person is limited to two minutes, and will then say thank you and appreciate you stopping at that time. And then the whole thing is limited to 20 minutes. We're also going to have some presentations after that. So if you don't get a chance to speak, you probably will hear your ideas as well later. But anyway, here we go. Twenty-three.
You're going to give each two minutes?
Mm-hmm.
That's 48 minutes.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes total.
Right. Twenty minutes total. So some of you aren't going to get to speak. But we also have some very lengthy and, you know, complete presentations to present the ideas as well. Okay, I'll take these in.
Just for clarification, so that you all know how this will roll, there's quite a few public comments. And so what our board president is saying is that we'll limit it to 20 minutes. However, and you see the item that I think many of you are interested in, 14.1, and the board does have the opportunity to bring that item up. Our policy just says that any item that's brought to the table through the public is at its last. But I think the board's intent is to put that up to the top so you don't have to sit here for two to three hours. And so at that point, we're going to be able to hear a presentation from the city of San Juan Capistrano, and also from NG, and then also from the district. And so that's what the board president is saying, is that if you're not able to speak as part of public comment, you might hear your ideas captured when the city of San Juan Capistrano does their presentation.
All on the same item? It's 20 minutes per item?
I think they are. Yeah. Did you guys look at? Excuse me. They're all, okay, I think it looks, okay. Number one, Brian DeFranco.
Right over here, testing.
Hi there. Just clarifying that I'm speaking on 14.1, Battery Storage Project. My name is Brian DeFranco. I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Lori Davies just to double and triple down her position that this project is a net negative to the community, to the residents of San Juan Capistrano and Laguna Niguel, and to her constituents. We've heard nothing but negative sentiment from all of the residents, from local legislators. We've met with city officials themselves. And this is not a good project for the city. Not to mention the amount of opposition that we've got to our office in terms of written opposition. You could reconstruct a redwood with all of this paper that we have of residents and constituents just submitting their opposition to this thing. I know there's going to be more speaking, but I had to reiterate her position that she's adamantly against this. And also, she does, for those concerned, she does have a bill that's sitting on the governor's desk right now, AB 615. And this bill is going to be cracking down and adding more security measures to future projects like this. Again, she is not against energy, and she is not against electric in California to meet these requirements. We understand that there's mandates. However, when it comes at the cost of safety for her constituents, she can't agree with it. So I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Is it? Is it? Is it gonna?
I'm recording.
Okay. The next speaker is John Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Ray Genaway. It's my privilege to be the mayor of the city of Laguna Niguel. You've heard from me several times now, through several emails. I've spoken at one of your meetings previously. I'm not going to reiterate every single point that I've made previously. But I do want to reiterate one specific point that has been new information as of just a few days ago. The site where this project is proposed, the jurisdiction for water is under the Santa Margarita Water District. A few days ago, the Santa Margarita Water District sent a letter to the CEC in summary stating that this project does not have water supply or water delivery infrastructure to suppress a fire. That is important as we are talking about community safety. It's also notable how reckless NG has been throughout this process when talking about safety, because throughout this process, they actually identified the wrong water district in their application to the CEC and just found out that it is in fact Santa Margarita Water District. We are not against energy projects of this kind. We are against this particular site because it presents a regional disaster if a fire were to occur to the I-5, to the rail corridor, to Oso Creek, to CAPO Unified School District, to the residents you see in this room in Laguna Niguel and San Juan Capistrano, and to this very college district. So we ask you to take every measure to oppose NG's application to the CEC. Thank you.
Could we have the next four people get in a line, please, to save time? That would be Roy Hine, Mr. and Mrs. Justin. I can't read that. Do you know who you are? Danny, Mike, and Ann Kramer.
Well, I might as well get started. My name's Roy Hine. I've lived here for almost four decades. I've been in the solar energy business that entire time. And I can tell you firsthand how dangerous batteries can be. And to have a bomb installed in our backyard? Shame on you. It does not belong. That's all I have to say. It's disgusting. I hope you guys make a better decision.
It says John, Mr. Justin?
Mike and Ann Kramer. And as Ryan noted at the beginning of this meeting, you know, we Americans have been subjected this month, in September, to having to relive the heartbreak of 9/11. Mike is a pilot. He happened to be involved in that whole thing and had to be firsthand there on that day when our enemies, our enemies, took the lives of so many innocent Americans. The day before this 9/11, we also were subjected to another death in Charlie Kirk. Whether you agree with them or not, it was devastating that someone could be having their life taken by another enemy. Then even more recently, just yesterday, we had the horrific event at the Church of Latter Day Saints by another enemy who didn't agree with that church. And it's a sad state that we're living in. And we should not be here tonight or any of the other previous nights we've come. And thank you. Our crowd is growing. People are really sick of this, and they're showing up. We should not be battling you as our Board of Trustees that we voted in. You should not be our enemy. We are residents here. You are residents nearby. And instead of just ignoring us and paying lip service to us when we come, instead of just nodding your heads and not being able to respond, this time, take it seriously and realize we mean business. And you are not treating the residents in this area that are going to be impacted by this properly. Don't be our enemy anymore. We have enough of them out there.
Hi, everybody. Am I good? Hi, everybody. My name is Dani Love, and I am a resident of Laguna Niguel. I am an independent journalist and a news content creator on TikTok, on YouTube, on Instagram, you name it. And I have a following of over 650,000 and over 300 million views in the last two years. I apologize for wearing a hoodie tonight. I was not planning on this. But look, I want to say first, raise your hand if you are against this NG battery facility. Every single person in this room is here for this issue. And as a news content creator, I can tell you, it is hard to get people on the left and on the right and in the middle to come together for an issue. But tonight, we are all here united against this project. Why? Because we love our community. We love Laguna Niguel. We love San Juan Capistrano. We love South Orange County. It's a beautiful, beautiful place with beautiful people, with beautiful nature. And we saw what happened in Malibu with the fires there. We know that where this facility is proposed to be is in a high-fire zone, threatening all of our homes, all of our loved ones, our family, our animals. We cannot allow profit over people in our city because people want to make a buck. Everybody has said from the city they are here for energy and for clean energy, but this is not the spot. There's no water resource to put out a fire that will just burn. You can't even put it out with water. So we, the people, have come together time and time again. I've interviewed people on the streets. I've interviewed people here. Time and time, we've come together to make our voices heard. And as a citizen, I'm going to commit to all of you that I will use my voice and my platforms to continue to blow this up so that our voices are heard. Thank you.
Could we have the next four people, please? Lori Peach, Cheryl, Curtis McLendon, Alyssa Cope.
My name is Lori Peach. We live in Laguna Hills, and we drive by where that battery facility is going to be. We know that it is a threat. We are your elected, your constituents. We elected you. And we elected you to hear us, to heed us. And instead, you've accepted monies in order for a developer to go ahead and build this battery facility. We're telling you it's not right. We're telling you to give the money back. We like this college. We want to support you. But you will be running for election again. So you need to think about that twice. It's not what your constituents want. You serve the people. It's not the other way around. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl, and I live in Laguna Niguel. And the shame of taking money for an agreement to approve something that your constituents are so totally against is really shameful. And this is something that I feel you all have the ability, knowing how your constituents feel, to make this right. And we're asking you to make this right. This money is blood money, and that's exactly what it is. And we are not going to stand for it. This has been a travesty, and this cannot stay this way forever. So you need to do your job. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Curtis McLendon. And I realize now that my timing was poor, but this is off of the main topic. But I, after 34 years of service to the district as a college chemistry professor here in the district, I retired in 2010 with the understanding that my full health benefits, including pharmacy coverage, would be continued without degradation. But that was not the case. And just this year, with the change to, in pharmacy coverage, to Navitas, I experienced an increase in cost, which was in two parts. I became subject to the Medicare Part D premium and the reduced formulary of Navitas so that one of my medications was not covered. In my last visit to my ophthalmologist, he told me that I had increasing permanent, not retina, but optic nerve damage, and that the primary medication that would reduce the intraocular pressure, he prescribed, but it was denied by Navitas. After two failed attempts to repeal that, I'm left stuck with an inferior medication. So I, as I see it, I have two choices. I can either take the degradation of benefit and the increased cost to me. My second choice would be to, what I'm doing tonight, which is to appeal to you, the board, to get involved with an agreement, contractual if necessary, to provide coverage for people who suffered from increased cost.
Thank you. Alyssa Cope.
Thank you. I think Ron Cabrera was supposed to go before me, so if he could go first, and then I'll go next, if that's okay. Ron Cabrera? Oh, Alyssa Cope. Yeah. If I can, can Ron go first, and then I can go?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Cabrera. Members of the board, as a concerned resident and retired Los Angeles fire chief focused on emergency planning, operations, and investigations, I urge you to not, to not support the proposed Compass Energy Storage Project in our community adjacent to schools and neighborhoods. The recent fire at the town site solar facility in Boulder City, Nevada, on September 23, 2025, serves as a stark warning. While that incident involved the same Tesla Megapacks proposed for San Juan, burning and releasing toxic smoke, its remote desert location minimized harm. But here, a similar fire would be catastrophic. Consider the contrast. Boulder City site is isolated, four miles from a small town of 15,000, with low density and no nearby homes. Our proposed site sits in a suburban hub next to the I-5, surrounded by dense neighborhoods in Laguna Niguel and Mission Viejo, 2,500 people per square mile. Thousands, including students at Saddleback College, children, and the elderly could be exposed to hazardous gases like hydrogen fluoride and carbon monoxide, causing respiratory issues, burns, and long-term health crisis. In Boulder City, smoke dissipated harmlessly in the open desert with no injuries or environmental spread. Here, in our dry wildfire-prone climate, toxic emissions could blanket urban areas, triggering widespread health alerts, hospitalizations, and even amplifying fire risks. No evacuations were needed there, but we'd face chaos, shelter-in-place orders, mass evacuations, straining our emergency responders, and I-5 closures causing regional gridlock, disrupting businesses, schools, and our local economy. Over 250,000 gallons of water contained the Boulder fire without runoff issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Alyssa, Alyssa Cope.
Thank you. Thank you, board. I would like to discuss two topics: the board's SEQA obligation and the board's fiduciary duty of care related to entering into the grant, aka Community Benefits Agreement, for the best facility and accepting funds for entering into that agreement. Collectively, we will call that the action. The question is, is the board action subject to SEQA? Let's take a look at it. What is a ministerial or a non-ministerial action which triggers SEQA? A ministerial action is an activity with little or no judgment needed by the public body, and it's generally exempt from SEQA. A non-ministerial action, which this is, is discretionary. It requires deliberation and judgment, and it is subject to SEQA. The board deliberated, and a judgment was taken. You all voted in favor of accepting the grant, Community Benefits Agreement. Legally, the board must prepare and consider a SEQA document before taking such action. Unfortunately, no SEQA document exists. No SEQA evaluation was available for the board to consider. The SEQA document should have included the items Ron mentioned, namely, whether the college's evacuation plan includes a best-facility fire scenario, what the effects are of the toxic plume that will blow over the college, affecting students and faculty. Will there be soil contamination from the heavy metal fallout? And just briefly, may I discuss also that the board has a fiduciary responsibility of care is risking potential toxic fumes, soil contamination, and an inadequate evacuation plan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the next four people come forward, please? Ellis Delametta, Amy David and Carl David, Natalie Simmons, Marie Block.
My name is Ellis Delametta. Forgive me for the hoarse voice. I live in Ladera Ranch, and our community is finally becoming aware of this project. I became aware of the project some time ago and attended at least two meetings at the city council in San Juan Capistrano. One of the city councilmen at that time described the project as an abomination. I think he's close. My background is in environmental health and in land planning. And this project violates all of those standards, both in environmental health and in land planning. This is not a good land use. In addition, the hazards that are associated with this project are unbelievable. To think that this project could be approved without consideration of the hazards regarding water quality, air quality, runoff, all of these are things that should be considered. I think that the Board of Trustees should take another look at this, another real close look at this, and consider what the action they're taking is going to do to this community. They don't deserve it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy David, and I live in Laguna Niguel. And I'm within the two-mile radius, which is why I'm so passionate about this discussion. We have emails. They've been posted to the docket. I'm not sure if all of you know this, but go to the Laguna Niguel city webpage. Look how to read the documents within the CEC docket. Educate yourself. You will see there's a series of emails, starting from December 2024. Tim Jamal, Ryan Dack, both chancellors, President Stern. You'll know that this did not come up as a surprise when they voted 7-0 in April. I caution you on that. We, the people, want you to listen to us, please. It's not supposed to be political. It's not. You're supposed to care about your constituents. Tim Jamal, you're my trustee. I want to know, are you for or against this? Will you be willing to defend the people in your community that don't want this? That's what I personally want to know. And I believe, Ryan, in your community, they want to know that. In Pendergast, in Rydell's, in Eman's, in Bartlet's, in, I don't know if I've left anybody out, but I want you all to know. Sorry, Ms. Marcia, sorry. In your district as well. Please do the right thing. Turn it down. You'll always be attached to this.
I just want to add, I've spoken. She's great, isn't she? I've spoken several times. But I just want to add, we, the community residents who are facing danger two miles away, as Amy just said, should be able to use the First Amendment to represent our families, our neighbors, and get your respect and consideration of our voices. Please, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Natalie Simmons. I'm a concerned resident of San Juan Capistrano, one mile from this thing. This project poses a huge dilemma for all of us, but not for NG. We will all have to live with the consequences of this decision for decades while NG makes money off of us. The CEC docket has over 3,400 letters of opposition from community members. You have done the absolute minimum of community engagement on this issue, only posting an agenda item, no other notification to the public. Subsidizing an internship for 30, I reckon, students annually does not compensate for the substantial costs in increased insurance premiums and decreased property values, which impacts hundreds of thousands of community members. Benefiting 30 students out of 18,000 students does not make a significant community benefit. The welfare of thousands of students that live in the surrounding communities must also be considered. I ask you to do the right thing and rescind this contract. If, as NG says, it will not prevent the project from progressing, then why have they written you an eight-page letter to help and asked you to be, and asked to be here tonight to speak for 10 minutes? Clearly, it matters to them. Yours is the most convincing CBA. Rescinding this grant sends a powerful message to the CEC. There were 17 other potential locations. This is just the best site for NG's profits and the worst site for this community. NG will generate hundreds of millions- NG will generate hundreds of millions of revenue dollars yearly from this project. There's no guarantee it will lower our consumption costs. We stand to lose a lot while this company stands to gain the most. You are being asked to balance the interests of your community with the profits of a corporation. You get to choose who to serve, our community, which includes your students, or NG. Thank you.
And Marie?
My name is Marie Block, and my husband and I have lived in Laguna Niguel for the past 39 years. We've also worked in this area and love this area, and we cherish it. And when we found out this was going in, we are doing everything we can to try and stop it. Do you realize that Saddleback College is within five miles of this proposed battery farm? If you were to ask your students and staff, would they want safety or money to do other things, I think they would pick safety. There are roughly 17 or more schools within a 10-mile radius of this proposed battery farm. All of Laguna Niguel is within the 10-mile radius. There would need to be evacuation plans for all of these schools and students and staff. Have you thought about that? Including your own, which is even closer, within five miles. Also, you probably are very aware that the two battery farms that we hear the most about, the ones that have caught fire, the one in Escondido and the one in Moss Landing. It's not a matter of if it's going to catch fire, it's when. And we already have. Another issue that was brought up at one of our last meetings was that the vibrations from the trains that continually go past this battery, proposed battery farm, can also possibly trigger it to combust and to catch fire. Have you thought about that? And how it would affect the Amtrak, the five freeway that has north and southbound of people that would have to be, it would probably, you know, it'd be very difficult if a fire occurred and that would be stopped, and how that would affect the economy and people getting home and so on. So I'm hoping for some heroes today. I'm hoping that you will be the heroes that think about the people and not the money. Think about the good of many over the greed of few. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and your participation. We are now going to have three presentations. Oh, okay. Without objection, we will move 14.1 to this time. Board members?
Don't move.
Madam President, I would just like you to give a few more minutes because we had problems with people walking up and someone speaking on behalf of a different.
He took, he did all that.
So you do not want to do that?
How many more do you have?
I would. Yeah, there's.
I would like, I would like to have more people speak as well.
Two, three. There are seven more? I would like to hear those seven.
I think it's fine, of course. If there's seven more speakers, they should be given a chance to speak. If, if possible, to limit the comments to one minute? No? All right. I tried.
Several of them have been less than two, so up to two. Less if possible. I'll call four of them. Anthony Mitchin, Kia Shul, Jeff White, Lois McNell. For our first four.
Good evening, Madam President, Board. My name is Anthony Mitchell. I am born and raised here. I was born in Missionville Hospital. I'm a fifth-generation Californian. My parents were split when I was a kid, so between which house I was at, I was either Laguna Niguel, San Juan, Dana Point, San Clemente. I've always lived here locally. I am in the energy business. I do work a lot with batteries. And from what I've seen and what I've learned and what the people have said today, this is the wrong spot for batteries. I'm not against battery, but I am against lithium. Lithium is combustible. It's spontaneous. There are other technologies, such as graphene, that can be used that are safe in a different location. The graphene is not combustible. You can store it indoors. You don't have the heat issues. You don't have the technology issues. It's safe. The problem is, is it's not commoditized like lithium, because most of that comes from Asia or other parts of overseas, and it's more expensive. So I'm here today to ask you guys to vote no on putting that battery in that battery location here. And I'm asking you guys today to ban lithium in all of Orange County and use something that's more safe, that's not combustible, and doesn't have the chemical issues or health issues that would come from it, and increase the level of requirements that are needed to build these plants in your area, so we don't have a Moss Landing or a Bullhead City or an Escondido, or think of all the houses that have had spontaneous fires break out because of lithium batteries. Thank you so much.
Kia Shul? Shudi Shul?
Well, I live in San Clemente, but I have always considered San Juan and Dana Point to be like a triad of cities, and we should be working together because anything that happens in San Juan, especially off of that, off of that Pacific Coast Highway, is definitely going to impact all the other beach cities that are here. And we are unique. We have unique beach cities right here. We have Dana Point with a harbor. We have San Juan with a mission. We have San Clemente with surfing. We should be doing everything we can to save that, to keep that environmentally safe and make sure that it is there for our children and our grandchildren and all the tourists that come here worldwide, by the way, to visit our cities, our beach cities, because they are so beautiful. They are so unique. And they actually do define California.
Jeff White?
Hi, my name's Jeff White. I'm a Laguna Niguel resident. I'm also a harbor pilot in the Port of Los Angeles. A year ago, one of these containers, one, fell over in the port and burned for four days. It shut the largest port in North America down for nine days. Now, we're going to put 70-something of them in our backyard. Do the right thing. Don't let your greed affect our environment, our families, our homes, and our schools. Do the right thing. Rescind this contract.
Lois? Is she here? Let's have the last three then, please, come up. Jean Smith, Pamela Toomey, Alyssa Cape. Are they here? No, yes?
Is it okay if I continue? Or, yeah, okay, let me just finish up real quick. I just wanted to say that. Okay, I can't have extra time? Okay.
I don't understand.
She just spoke.
Oh. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Toomey. I have lived in Village San Juan, which is just up the street, for 49 years. That community is so dear to my heart. But I can tell you, there are 800 homes there with approximately 4,000 people living there. With, and Summer Walk is directly in front of us. To the north of us is Spotted Bull, with one way out. We have two lanes out that are barely passable as it is. To the left of us is Stone Ridge, with one way out down a canyon. So here we have Capo Valley High School. We have this beautiful college. I have been here at a football game. I have seen what the traffic looks like, and it is not even an emergency. Can you imagine what it would be like if that fire jumps the freeway? And in most fires, they do jump the freeway. And we are all stranded on this side with absolutely no way out to the other direction. So my question for you is, how much are all those lives worth? Because when it's done, they're going to hang it on your hat. Thank you.
Jean Smith?
Just the mic just a little bit. Yeah, my name's Jean Smith. I've been a resident here of Laguna Niguel for the last four decades. My family came out here in the 1800s. They, actually, my grandmother, great-grandmother walked out beside a covered wagon to get here. I can't add any more to what's been said today and tonight other than you take a look over the top of your head, this is Ronald Reagan, Board of Trustees. Use common sense. Take the information you've received tonight. Take the facts into consideration and understand the catastrophic situation that could happen if you allow this to go through. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I have two cards, and I'm not sure if they've spoken. It got a little confusing. Have the following spoken? Alyssa Cape and Lois McNell? Yes, no?
I've spoken, but I have one more paragraph. It's a note, two minutes.
No. Okay, one paragraph.
Yeah, briefly, I just wanted to give a graceful way out for this. I think that your initial consideration did not include evaluating all of these environmental impacts. You really should be doing a CEQA evaluation, which didn't happen. At a minimum, why don't you take time to prepare a CEQA document to look at these impacts and then decide if you still want to move forward with this agreement? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we are going to have three presentations. They have a maximum of 10 minutes each. Probably, they won't use that much. But the first one is from.
Point of order, we're moving 14.1 to the top.
Yes.
Okay, that's what this is regarding.
No, we didn't do that yet.
Okay, so we started to vote and then.
We're not voting on it. We're just deciding that we wanted to move 14.1 up, which is what the three presentations are a part of.
Right, right. We started to vote and then we went back. Okay, I.
You guys are government teachers.
I got it. All right, so how many? Let's vote on moving 14.1.
We don't have to vote on it.
We don't have to?
It's your prerogative.
It's my prerogative. We're going to do it. All righty. The first presentation is from the city of San Juan Capistrano.
Thank you. Thanks for your guys' participation this evening. And I really, I want at this point, say thanks to the Board. You guys are doing a great job. Okay, I know we're here to talk about something that's not usually on your docket. My wife and I have lived here for a long time. We've raised our six kids here. They've all attended public schools. They've taken classes at Saddleback. I sat out in the parking lot waiting for their classes to finish. And just walking up the steps, my city manager and I were saying, God, this place is amazing. You guys are doing a wonderful job, so thank you. We're here to talk about something unique tonight, and I have to think that you guys must be thinking, what the heck? I signed up to be a community college board, and we're talking about environmental impacts and battery storage and all of these sorts of things. I guess I should introduce myself first. I'm the mayor of San Juan Capistrano. My name is Troy Born. Thanks, Steve. I'm serving near the end of my second term, so I've been working in the city for about eight years now on the City Council. I've also served for five years on the Orange County Fire Authority as a director there, so I'm somewhat familiar with that. I've spent my professional life the last 25 years developing large, complicated real estate in California. And two of those years, I spent working for the owner of the subject property, trying to work on this very parcel to make it developable. We stopped working on it because it was not. And I think that's going to come up a little bit later in some of the comments that I want to share with you. As I mentioned a second ago, if I were on your board, I'd probably be saying, what are we doing here tonight, talking about this? This isn't our scope. Aren't we really just focused on our students and getting classrooms funded and teachers? And I think to some degree, that's probably true. I sometimes get a limited scope in my mind when I'm serving as mayor or the City Council. Who is it that I'm representing? Is it only the people who voted for me? Is it only the taxpayers? What about my business owners? They don't live here. And I think surely that we can say that your scope is broader than your current students. At the very least, we could say that your scope is the interest of those who hope to attend your classrooms. The children in our communities, the families in our communities, trying to make this work and create an educational opportunity for their children, they're your scope as well. And I think that that's probably, I came here from teaching a class of kids who are a little bit younger. They were high school kids, a little bit younger than the kids. I guess you guys have some high school kids here taking classes. And they want so much of what you're providing, but if you talk to them about government today, they want something different than they've experienced in their short lives. And what they're asking for more than almost anything else is transparency. Okay? They don't understand because so many of what they see as important decisions are happening behind closed doors. And information is not being processed in a way that they would find more useful and open to them. I think that what we'd like you to do tonight is to revote on the decision you made several months ago. I think that, I'm not going to opine, you guys get to make the vote on whether or not it was a good vote or a bad vote, but I think all of us can agree that it was a bad process. In San Juan Capistrano, we're fortunate that our staff has never made a mistake, or us as a council. But I think, but I can also, give them the benefit of the doubt. If I'm your staff, I'm going, I don't want you guys to have a war upon the dais. Someone's trying to give us money. Let's clean this document up. Let's pull out the language that might otherwise raise some flags around the community, and you guys were able to make a decision in less than 60 seconds of consideration. I think that we can say now, there's more information. Right? We could have more information in this vote, and there certainly has been more transparency. And now each of you has an opportunity. I think even Board members who have knowledge in public, I might have read this report more carefully had I known all that was loaded into this, but I didn't know at the time. That's okay. We do the best we can. You guys are doing your work for us, and we appreciate it. But certainly, you have the opportunity to now to redo that vote. And you're saying, I know, but there's going to be consequences if we revote now. There certainly will be. There's going to be, if you redo this and you pull this Community Benefits Agreement back or whatever, you guys have renamed it, there'll be consequences. NG is motivated and well-funded, okay? But I would also argue that they're either not competent or not honest. Okay? It may be, but certainly one or the other. The project is stalled right now because they're claiming that there's new information that they didn't know about when they went to the CEC for. They didn't know that the property was falling into the creek, and they didn't know that there were landslides in the slopes. In the very first meeting we had with them years ago, because I had worked on the property, we addressed both of those issues in great detail. Okay, years they've known about this. They're coming to you and saying that they're not relying on what you're doing, that they have other community benefit agreements that they could rely on. Then let them. Then let them. There shouldn't be consequences. If they know that there are other things that they can do, then let them do it. Other elected officials have chosen not to stay neutral on this. This isn't a partisan issue. Leaders all the way up to our congressmen, county supervisors, everybody in between has said, you know what? This is not a partisan thing. I'm not a partisan. But certainly, we owe it to our constituents to be transparent about what we're doing here. If you vote to allow us, allow this CBA, then you're rolling out the red carpet for a project that's harmful to the community and to your constituents. You have the flexibility to revote and make a different decision. But please don't. What I'm asking you, please do not do what you're going to be tempted to do, which is defer and go try to make this decision when all of these people are here. Okay? Take a vote tonight. Own your decision in public. Because if we don't do that, then the other consequence will be we will agendize it again at the next meeting. And again at the next meeting, until we have an opportunity to see our elected officials be accountable for their decision, whichever way you choose to go. Thank you for your time. I'm going to defer now to. I'm going to defer now to one of my council members.
Like to start off by thanking Vice President Dack for acknowledging 9/11. I was in the Pentagon on 9/11. I lost 14 friends that day. And for you to do that means a lot to me. Thank you. And in the spirit of neighborliness, I'd like to point out that there's obviously a lot of passion here tonight. We're here tonight not because we want to harm Saddleback College or the district. We're here tonight, we're passionate tonight, because we're here to save our community from a lasting damage from a land use decision. We're asking you to undo an honest mistake that you made that enabled it. And I'm going to talk a little bit about a portion of that tonight, and about the message that you received from your council earlier this week or last week. As I have said before, Saddleback and IVC played a formative role in my life. I received my associate's degree from here, played football here. My wife swam here. My father was the founding president of Irvine Valley College. I want the district to thrive, and I want each of you to succeed in your roles. In that spirit, I'm asking that you listen to the following comments, not as an admonishment. That's what, that's not what this is about, but as a communication from a fellow elected official who's asking you to reconsider, reconsider a grave mistake. The Brown Act guarantees that elected officials may participate in meetings, including closed sessions except in two narrow cases: a financial conflict of interest or when a member is a named party in pending litigation. In 1989, the Court of Appeals made clear in footnote seven of Hamilton versus the town of Los Gatos that only state law, not local policy, can justify exclusion. And again, state law allows exclusion in only those two narrow cases: a financial conflict of interest or when a member is named and a party in pending litigation. More recently, in 2022, the U.S. Supreme Court in Houston Community College System versus Wilson unanimously drew a bright line. A board may censure a colleague, but it cannot impair their ability to perform their duties of their office. Excluding trustee Rydel crosses that line, silencing not just her voice, but the voice of her constituents. Yet, here, using circular logic, your council has defended the exclusion of trustee Rydel by citing Board Policy 2715 to justify itself. However, the policy of a local community college district cannot justify its own legality, especially when it is directly contrary to the Brown Act in binding appellate and Supreme Court case law. This isn't simply a matter of interpretation. It's a misrepresentation of the law, and the consequences are not abstract. Trustee Rydel is the elected representative of San Juan Capistrano, the community most directly affected by the NG battery project. By excluding her from closed sessions, you are not just silencing one of your colleagues. You are disenfranchising an entire city, my city. Finally, finally, I must note that this raises real Brown Act concerns, particularly about the validity of any actions taken in violation of that law. So tonight, I urge you, first, to rescind the CBA, which was deliberated upon in a manner inconsistent with the Brown Act. And second, repeal this board exclusion policy. And third, commit to legality, transparency, and service to your constituents. Do so for the sake of Saddleback College's reputation, for the community you serve, and because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
That is all the time that San Juan, as a city, has. It's been the 10 minutes.
I'm with the city attorney's office for San Juan Capistrano, and I have just two minutes of short remarks to make.
Just give equal time, Carol.
Okay.
Make sure they have equal time.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Ryan Baron. I'm a partner at Best Best &amp; Krieger. We're city attorney to San Juan Capistrano, and I work with the city's utilities council at the Energy Commission. We represent a lot of government agencies in what we do, so my remarks today is the advice that we would give our own clients. I'm also an alumnus of Saddleback College. I got my AA degree here in 1996, and one of my children goes to one of your junior colleges. So I grew up in this city and not flown in from Sacramento or San Francisco to make remarks today, but really understand this issue in the community itself. We believe that you have two options before you. One is to rescind and re-vote the item because it was inconsistent with the Brown Act. The agenda report and the staff presentation that day would have been sufficient for a typical grant agreement that might have been from the Samuelis or anyone else. But in this case, there's been widespread opposition to the project. There was no mention of the project in the staff report, no mention of federal, state, and local opposition on both sides of the aisle, the regional and local agencies that have objected to the project, no mention of the CEC, NG's satisfaction of community benefits agreement requirements under state law, or that the agreement is even contingent on the CEC's approval or other financing and notices in construction and so forth. So that deprived the public of a meaningful opportunity to comment on the item, which I think is evident by the crowd here today. More importantly, had the board had that information, you might have requested more information from staff, or you might have changed your perspective, or you might have even changed your vote, had you known the full implications of the agreement or the project. Certainly, a court would give you deference as a school district if you were to reconsider your action and re-vote the item. It would give deference to your legislative findings and your executive findings because you're trying to cure a Brown Act issue. Now, this is not an effort to point fingers at you or your staff. It's mostly, it's just to comply with that action taken that day. You have another option as well, which is to terminate the agreement. There's no provision in the contract that says you can't. There's been dozens of community benefits agreements filed at the CEC, some on the Darden Energy Project, which we follow, another proceeding I'm involved in out there as well. Not that one, but a different one. And community benefits agreements in some fashion will have termination provisions. This does not have that. There's also six or seven conditions in it that apply to the CEC and NG that are in your agreement, none of which will apply to you, except acceptance of the money and how you spend it. But there's certain conditions that have to be met in the agreement before it's even valid. So those conditions haven't been met, and therefore you can terminate it. Now, if this were just a generic grant agreement, it could be terminated outright. There's no consideration, right? Because it's from a private entity giving the college, giving the college district money with no equal exchange of value. We've done a pretty exhaustive search over the last few days, and there's no real case law on this issue. Why? Because it would be ridiculous to say that a school district, or a college, or university couldn't reject money from a donor, or couldn't reject a grant agreement because it learned about the color of the money, or whatever project, or whatever that donor was about later. Therefore, there would also be no damages associated with your termination. Now, just very quickly, NG had a long, detailed response about harm to the students and your fiduciary obligations. But what kind of donor would offer money to a college and then potentially threaten you with a lawsuit that you could go into closed session on? That you cannot then, on an agreement that you legally shouldn't have taken action on, or maybe you no longer want to take that money? So if NG is committed to the student interest, then the board can re-vote the item, or even enter into a grant agreement with Compass that's no longer associated with this project or the CEC, or couldn't be filed as a community benefits agreement. So there's been a couple of agreements cited that, you know, this agreement is, this project's going to go through. This is just one of many agreements. But this issue is really in your hands, because this is the agreement that is satisfying their community benefits obligation. And while there are other issues that will likely lead to project denial, deal with safety and the environment, this is a key finding that the CEC has to make based on this contract. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, the second presentation is by NG, and to have equal time, you have up to 14 minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Yes? My name is Renee Robin. I'm director for permitting and planning at NG. I'm very impressed and appreciate the heartfelt comments of everyone here tonight. I don't have the oratory skills of many of you, but I would like to say that I did submit a letter to you that laid out what we believe are the facts in the situation. We are really honored to have entered into this contingent agreement with the college district, which would be dependent on whether the California Energy Commission were to make a decision that the project was safe and should go forward. And should they make that decision, then we want to do the right thing by complying with those regulations and making donations to local organizations such as the college. The college is very well aware of battery storage. You're doing battery storage on some of your campuses. There's battery storage all over California, and it needs to be done in a proper and safe way. Orange County had a moratorium on new battery storage projects until they had time to sit down and write a really detailed ordinance, which just passed the planning commission and is about to go to the Board of Supervisors. I encourage anyone to look at that very carefully. Everything about that ordinance, our project is in compliance with and was before it was even written. And it's our goal to put safety first in everything that we do, but you don't have to take my word... No, wait. I gave you respect. You don't have to take my word for this. It's not my decision to make, and it's not your decision to make. It's the Energy Commission's decision to make. But should they make that decision, we want the students of the college district to benefit from it, and that's what this agreement was about. We shared it very clearly for everyone to see. It was on the agenda and so on. Now, rather than trying to, I'm not going to try to convince anyone of anything tonight. I know you believe very strongly in your positions, but I just would like to say that our letter lays out our position on these issues, and I want to introduce Ryan Waterman, who is our counsel, and he'll give you some more details. Thank you.
Good evening, President Inman, Honorable Board of Trustees. My name is Ryan Waterman. I'm a shareholder with a law firm of Brownstein, Hyatt Harbor Shrek, and I'm counsel for Compass Energy Storage. Thank you very much for making time for us tonight. I'd like to start off with first what the grant agreement does not do. It doesn't require the district to support this project. It keeps the district neutral, and it doesn't require the district in any way to endorse the project. It also doesn't require you to help the Compass project seek approval in any way. All it requires you to do is accept the money and put it to use for the work-based learning programs, which are the purpose of the agreement. There are four, there are four kind of principal considerations as trustees that I think come into play tonight in this request that the city has put on your docket for terminating the agreement. And the city's request letter actually actively avoids any mention of students or your, the trustees' responsibilities. So I'll put those out there really quickly. So the first principal responsibility that trustees have is to put the students' welfare first. That's in Board Policy 2715. And I don't need to recite it back to you guys. You guys are very familiar with that policy. The second principal consideration that comes into play tonight, it comes from the Code of Regulations. I'm sure your counsel has advised you on this as well, and that's to ensure student participation and consideration for all major decisions, like rejecting three-quarters of a million dollars for work-based learning programs. So I see a lot of people here, but I don't see a lot of students. And I'm not sure to what extent they've been advised that this opportunity may be taken from them. Third...
Let him speak, please.
Third, the Committee College League of California's Trustee Handbook advises that when these issues come up, whether student and community interests that need to be balanced, that that, that those actions need to be taken with the students' best interest in mind, and that needs to avoid quick fixes, right? And take a long-term view. And I guess the last and probably most pertinent consideration for the board tonight comes from Education Code 76396.1, where it talks about incentivizing and increasing both the percentage of the number of students that are educated through the Saddleback College system and all the community college systems that are job-ready and have work-based learning opportunities. And second, to increase the percentage of transfer students to both the CSU and the UC systems. Now, the, if you look at the purpose of this grant agreement and what's stated there, it mirrors the language of this code of the, a part of the Education Code almost exactly. So it's exactly expressing what the board's direct, what the legislature's directive is to not just this community college, but every community college, to make those two goals come to life for the students that come and seek education here. Now, the city's request almost entirely ignores student benefit. It basically focuses on their own issues, which is not your principal concern, frankly. Your principal concern is student welfare, and how best to bring your students to the next level. I'd like to take a brief moment to respond to a couple of the issues that have been raised by public commenters in the city today. So first, with respect to water supply. This project and the, is on the community, or is on the Saddleback, I'm sorry, the Rancho Capistrano Saddleback Church property, which is served already by the Molten and Gell Water District. There was no error in NG in the Compass project identifying that water district as its source of water, because there's an eight-inch water line that runs a couple hundred yards from the project site. It's always been that project's intent to get service from Molten and Gell Water District and not from Santa Margarita. So there was no error there, and there is no problem there with water supply. Second, we have a very competent nationwide expert called Fire and Risk Alliance, which has done extensive fire review for the type of battery that is going to be used in this project. It's called a Megapack 2 XL made by Tesla. They have concluded that there is no risk of embers being released from the fire based on...
No risk is zero. There's no way it's zero.
No risk of embers being released from a fire, which could start a wildfire outside the perimeter wall, which is going to be a 10-foot block, concrete wall. And second, another toxic gas plume analysis, called a plume analysis, has been done in a couple of different ways to demonstrate that there's no risk of hazardous gases escaping the...
Excuse me.
What's that light out there?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, President Inman. No risk of toxic gases escaping the property boundaries in levels that would be harmful to human health. Third, there's been some question about whether a proper environmental review has happened. Well, not yet. That's because the Energy Commission is the lead agency for CEQA, and they have not yet prepared or released a draft EIR. Everyone in this room is going to have an opportunity to review and analyze and comment on that EIR, which will then be revised and then turned into a final EIR before the CEC takes any action. It is emphatically not this board's duty to do CEQA. It is the Energy Commission's duty to do CEQA. And so any allegation that you needed to do CEQA prior to executing a grant agreement is just frankly wrong. Last, on the Brown Act issue that was just raised by counsel for the city, I'll defer to your counsel. They're much more well-positioned to advise you on Brown Act issues. But I will, I will just say that, you know, the Brown Act has certain statute of limitations, and the city didn't sue before the statute of limitations expires on your decision in April to approve this grant agreement, which speaks, I think, some volume about what they thought about that contention. And then last, I'd just conclude by saying that they're really, we urge you to reject the city's, the city's request and maintain the grant agreement for the, for the students. In the event that you feel like that there's too much pressure for you not to take some action, we request that the district advise staff and refer this matter to staff to prepare a staff report and go through the normal deliberative process so that you guys are presented with sufficient information from your own staff and counsel to deliberate on this issue. We're obviously here for questions, if there are any, in when you guys get through your deliberations. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you.
About the students, make a donation.
Excuse me.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Again, I just, I just wanted to reiterate, you hear a lot of... I just wanted to reiterate—you hear a lot of things, whether it's from me or anyone else in the room, about what the project is and whether or not it's safe. We have experts, whether it's the Orange County Fire Authority, the Orange County Board of Supervisors Ordinance, the California Energy Commission, with all of their staff of subject-matter experts. Those are the ones who are going to make a decision on what constitutes a good, safe energy storage project. So we don't expect the College District to become experts overnight on that topic. What we do understand is that if that project is deemed to be acceptable, then we should do our duty by making donations to the local community. That's in the Orange County Ordinance. That's in the Energy Commission statute. And we—and when we have done projects, even when it wasn't required, we have always done that. And so entering into an agreement with you all that says, "Should the project be approved, we will make a donation to the scholarship fund," is a good thing, and we should all embrace that. That's us doing our civic duty, and that's you doing your job for the students. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to the next presentation, please. Excuse me.
Excuse me. Okay, so at this time, I'll—as clerk, I'll be reading the district's response to the item. Summary statement. The South Orange County Community College District approved a grant agreement—not a community benefits agreement— with Compass Energy Storage LLC in April 2025. The district's intent was to remain neutral on the Compass Energy Storage Project itself while staying true to our mission of serving students, specifically by expanding paid work-based learning opportunities. The agreement was never intended to signal support or opposition to the energy project, but rather to advance educational and workforce development goals. At no point was there any ill intent to act against the wishes of the community. In fact, prior to the board's approval in April 2025, district staff became aware of some community concern and proactively engaged with key community members to clarify the district's neutral stance on the project itself and the educational purpose behind the agreement. One such conversation with the city occurred two weeks before the April board meeting, and the district anticipated that if there was any significant opposition, that it would be formally communicated to the chancellor or board of trustees as the ultimate discussion-making—or decision-making authority. No such outreach occurred prior to the vote. Additionally, the district did not fully understand at the time that its approval of the grant agreement would be viewed as a triggering event for the California Energy Commission's CEC review of the Compass Project under AB 205's opt-in certification process. This lack of clarity reflects the nascent and evolving nature of AB 205, not any misconduct or misrepresentation by the district or its board. In summary, the district acted in good faith with a clear focus on student benefit and without knowledge of significant community opposition or the broader regulatory implications at the time of approval. The city's correspondence to terminate the agreement, the city received formal—the district received formal correspondence from the City of San Juan Capistrano requesting that the Board of Trustees consider terminating the grant agreement with Compass Energy Storage LLC. The city and community members have asserted that termination of the agreement would result in the California Energy Commission halting its review of the Compass Storage Project under NG's application as the agreement is being approached as a required, quote, "community benefits agreement" under AB 205. However, NG has indicated that it can substitute the district's agreement with another qualifying agreement to satisfy AB 205 requirements. The district also received communication that the CEC—from the CEC— confirming that NG's application will still receive a proper review even if the district terminates the agreement. Notably, both NG and the CEC assert that the grant agreement does not contain a legal termination clause, which raises questions about the district's ability to unilaterally withdraw without risk. The city's request has been placed on today's agenda in accordance with Education Code 72121.5 and Board Policy 2340. Given a number of assertions raised in the city's correspondence, we asked our legal counsel to provide a response. What follows summarizes that response. Key issues in district's response. One, nature of the agreement. The district approved a grant agreement—not a community benefits agreement— at its April 28, 2025 meeting. The format used was consistent with other recent agreements, such as one with the Samweli Foundation to provide paid, work-based learning opportunities to students. Trustee Rydell's closed session exclusion. The city alleged improper exclusion of trustee Rydell. The board unanimously passed a censure resolution under January 21, 2025, citing violations of confidentiality and attorney-client privilege. Board Policy 2715 authorizes exclusion from closed session under such circumstances. Alleged unlawful negotiations. City claims staff unlawfully negotiated with NG. The district confirms that no laws were violated. Staff routinely engaged with grantors to assess alignment with district goals. Final approval. Authority rests solely with the board per Education Code 17604, 81655, and 81656. Alleged Brown Act violation. The city asserts that item 10.2 from the April 28 agenda violated the Brown Act. The district maintains that the agenda item was properly noticed, clearly described, and compliant with Government Code 549454.2A1. Community outreach and transparency. The city references outreach efforts by NG and their consultants, Venture Strategic, to district staff and board members prior to the April vote. While meetings called out in the correspondence did occur, they were not only lawful but informational-only and lacked full disclosure to district staff of project history or the magnitude of community opposition. Termination of the agreement. The city argues the agreement can be terminated without penalty due to unmeant conditions. The district notes that the indemnification clause may expose the district to liability if termination is deemed a breach. Legal counsel has advised caution and further review before considering unilateral termination. Conclusion and recommendation. While the district maintains that the grant agreement was lawfully approved and appropriately described, staff and legal counsel recommend the board deliberate on the city's concerns and direct staff to return with options regarding the grant agreement's future. And just to September 24, a letter from the CEC says, "To date, the applicant has filed two agreements, one with a community college and the second with a second harvest in a effort to comply with Public Resources Code Section 25545.10." That section requires the commission, before approving a project, finds that the applicant has entered into one or more legally binding and enforceable agreements with or that benefit a coalition of one or more community-based organizations. For purposes of providing an agreement compliance with Section 25545.10, both agreements and any additional ones submitted by the applicant can be considered by the CEC. There is no limitation on the applicant's ability to substitute one agreement with another agreement that also qualifies. The statute only requires that a proper agreement must be in place before the CEC can approve the project. And then we're going to ask our legal counsel, Matt, to address some of the legal issues brought up in comments.
Yes, Matthew Wang, legal counsel. I think the first thing that the public represented that is a legal issue is the CEQA, the environmental analysis. The CEC is reviewing the EIR. That's an environmental impact report. It's prepared by the applicant's count—excuse me, consultant regarding the environmental effects of the project. So that is not the—that is not the job or the responsibility of the district to weigh in on the environmental impacts for a grant agreement, unless that grant agreement has its own terms and conditions which would create environmental impact. That's not the case here. With respect to the assertions regarding improper communications between the applicant and Venture Strategic and staff, it's very common for districts—excuse me, public agency staff to communicate and negotiate with a grantor with respect to grant agreements, and the ultimate decision-making approval rests with the board. It's—that's—there's about 100 years of precedent on that. With respect to the Brown Act issues, the granted grant agreement agenda item states and set— says what it says and speaks for itself. The term "grant agreement" was used, and I note that the term "grant agreement" appears on the actual title of the document. The grant agreement itself was listed as an exhibit, so there really isn't any evidence of a conspiracy or withholding of vital information from the public. Yes, answers—that's all the answers I have thus far.
Okay. Madam President.
Okay. It's time for a motion. Right? Right. Right, but we need the motion now. Yeah.
Madam President.
I want to comment, but—
Oh, okay, well—
Do you want to comment first?
Got to make the motion first. You go ahead and do it.
I can do it.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank everyone for attending the meeting this evening. So six months have transpired—
Got to make the motion.
Yeah. So I had requested to speak, but I—we—
Okay, well, I'm getting to the motion, but I want to lead up to the motion.
I think you just have to make it before we can really discuss—
You can have first right to speak to your motion, but you can't have any discussion before a motion.
Okay, so based upon everything that's transpired this evening and appreciate everyone's comments, especially our legal counsel indicating distilling findings that are important to properly set things up. My motion is pretty simple. One, direct staff to draft the findings justifying termination of the grant agreement to be approved at our next board meeting. I know that'll take some time. And two, direct staff to create a plan to replace the grant funding that would have been received under the grant agreement, but through our own efforts so that students would still receive the workforce development paid internship opportunities.
Is there a second?
I got a second from Terry.
I'll second that.
Terry already—
She already seconded.
Terry.
It has been moved. What? Yeah, it's like really long.
Point of order.
Yes.
You can't make that motion on this item. It's not agendized. You can only make a motion on the agendized item, which is to consider the termination and direct—you're asking them to come back with findings for voting on termination next time.
Can we ask legal counsel if that's correct?
Because he actually wrote this.
The second part?
Asked him to write the first part.
The second part. She can't make a motion to direct staff to find other ways to do money in this item. That's not part of the motion, or it's not part of the item.
Yeah, I think we—I think it's sufficiently close enough. And if not, we can discuss it at a later date.
It's associated.
For replacing the funding, which should be a part of other agenda items anyways.
Okay.
The problem is, it's really long. Would you help both of us get it? Say it again.
So Leo, do you need me to relay this again?
It's reported, too, so she can do it.
Okay, so the motion is to direct staff to draft findings justifying termination of the grant agreement to be approved at our next board meeting. That was part one. And then, do you need me to repeat part two? Okay. The second part is to direct staff to create a plan to replace the grant funding that would have been received under the grant agreement, but through our own efforts so that students would still receive workforce development paid internship opportunities.
Even if you read the rest of it, she can't—she hasn't gotten it all.
Okay.
Neither of us have it.
All right, directs—the second part is to direct staff to create a plan to replace the grant funding that would have been received under the grant agreement, but through our own efforts so students would still receive workforce development paid internship opportunities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So discussion? Trustee Jamal?
Yes. I just wanted to—I'll modify what I plan to say given on the motion in the second here. First, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and for all the meetings before this. I think it's been fantastic to have the community engaged like this. So very appreciative and respectful of this engagement. I think—and we discussed it—I think the clear intent of the board at the April 2025 meeting was to accept a grant agreement. That was the intent of the board. Would the grant have benefited our students? Yes, of course. We're talking about three-quarters of a million dollars that would have gone to students to advance their careers, provide internship opportunities, externship opportunities. I ran for this board on that precept to particularly develop our ATEP PAC campus, which is a public-private partnership to promote programs and certificates to help our students get in-demand jobs. So yes, it would be important. This money would be important. I think it's interesting that NG—I don't know where they are—showed up tonight. And obviously, it's clear to you is much more than a grant agreement, the fact that you're here tonight. The—the board—our intent on the April board meeting actually was bolstered, and I appreciate NG sending their letter. In your letter, you used the term "grant agreement" 36 times to indicate what was done by our Board of Trustees in April. And I just want to quote from the NG letter. I'm not going to quote the whole thing, but part of it. It says, quote, "NG has confirmed that terminating the grant agreement will not impair Compass's ability to meet this minimal requirement." End quote. I don't—I think that speaks volumes. The other thing is, I would be hypocritical to say I'm in support of local control. I don't support usurpation of local control by the state. So— And I think in this instance, although we are not a land use agency, we are not. That's not what we do. I think even the mayor indicated that. That's not our mission. We're very proud that we have the two best colleges, community college in the state and nation. And we're—you should be proud, too, of that. So in the context of local control, honestly, I haven't heard one member of the community speak out in favor of the project. So that's meaningful. I just want to say a couple of things. I—I really—I thank all of you for your voices, but I in particular really want to thank council member Stephanie Odo, who had reached out to me and after the April vote and communicated in a thoughtful way some of the implications I was not fully aware of, and actually took me to the site to give me a better understanding of—the potential implications and concerns of the residents. So council member Odo, I really thank you for that. And I also thank Mayor Ray Genaway, who sent a very thoughtful letter. Very appreciated. Lastly, I want to thank our chancellor, Juliana Barnes. Juliana came to this district about three years ago, and it's no accident that in three years that consecutively, the last two years, both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College have been ranked the top two community colleges in the state and the nation. And I think she's worked tirelessly on this— I think she's worked tirelessly on this project and done so with integrity, so thank you, Juliana.
I have something to say.
So, yeah, based on the aforementioned, I am supportive of this motion and moving ahead accordingly.
Yeah, I just.
Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments of trustee Jamal. I too was learning so much more about this project after we voted on it, which I personally thought it was just a grant agreement and didn't understand the implications behind it, even though I did read the agenda. But I think that part of the problem is that when this bill, AB 2, when the bill AB 205 was passed in Sacramento in 2022, what it did was it took local control away from the local cities and municipalities. What? Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, and prior to that, the local cities and municipalities could actually determine whether something like a Compass Energy battery storage plant or any other entity could be in the area, but what it did is it moved the total control up to Sacramento, and they have the, you know, California Energy Commission vote on whether these projects are worthy of putting in certain neighborhoods. I think this bad Compass Energy battery storage plant is probably a good idea someplace not in a very, very heavily populated area, because, because, because we do need, we do need energy, and we do need more energy, we're a growing place, but what happened was I listened, there were two testimonies. One was held, anyway, there were two testimonies that I didn't know about beforehand, but they were held, one was held May 29th and one was held on June 3rd. The one May 29th was held at the Capistrano Unified School District, and I'm sure many of you were there, I know Mayor Genaway was there. And what happened was, these, these hearings were actually on Zoom, and they were recorded, and you can listen to these hearings. So in the past few days, each hearing was almost all day long, and in the past few days, I listened to all of the hearings. I listened to the May 29th hearing and the June 3rd hearing, and I heard so many testimonies from so many scientists and physicians and local residents and children that called saying that they don't want this project in that close to their schools, that I was very, very moved by the situation. Testimony from the Orange County Professional Fire Fighters Association. So in that right, I think that, you know, NG is probably is a wonderful company. They're a hundred million, hundred billion dollar company out of, located in Paris, France, and they do put these wonderful plants all over the country, but this bill gave them the energy, I hope it's okay to say this, to actually pay entities that want to only help their students, because that's what we're here to, to help our students, to put in, pay what they say is quite a bit of money to us, but to a billion dollar project isn't really a lot of money, and I'm just really not in favor of a bill like this, so I just want to be, I don't, I'm not saying about anything else, but I'm not in favor of a bill like this. So thank you so much.
Trustee Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have a motion and a second on the table, but I just want to say it, six months have literally transpired since we voted on the grant agreement, and acknowledge that, you know, mistakes have been made that now need to get fixed. I think we all agree that battery storage is needed to service our future energy needs, but not in the proposed location in San Juan Capistrano. It's very close, it's very close to residents that live within a mile and a half of the area. There's only one ingress and egress point over a bridge that may not even be suitable for a multitude of large, heavy equipment, like fire trucks. There are environmental concerns, wildfire concerns, and for South County, I've always been concerned, because in South County, we only have one freeway. We don't have a lot of different routes you can take if there's a significant emergency in the area. The trustees take this matter very seriously. We know that we not only serve the students in our district, but we also serve the community and district at large, and that community input and impacts are really important. The district has attempted a mutual termination of the grant agreement, but that was not successful. We have a few options left, unilateral termination of the grant agreement, or do nothing, and in my opinion, the time for action by the board is now. Thank you.
Yes, I have two words for all of you. Thank you. I have, I, thank you. I truly believe, when I took on this position, that having been here a long time, I've been to many board meetings, but I've never seen a group of people so respectful, so smart, so involved, and that you've come together and truly worked together. You need to write a book. I truly mean, and I want to reiterate what has been said by the board, we meant well, and we've spent a lot of time on this, and a lot of time, I'm sure, alone, remembering what you said. I take notes, and I think, I'm going to use that sometime, but I just want to say thank you, and some of you, or all of you, are really appreciated, and I can't be more proud to be your trustee. You're my constituents. Thank you.
Do any other trustees have any discussion? While our president has stepped away, I guess I will say a few words. I do appreciate everyone who's come out here today. I hope that it has been conveyed that we really do care about what the community thinks, but I hope in that you also understand that when we come to this job, we are not looking to enrich ourselves. You can go look at our board compensation, get about $750 bucks a month doing this. I don't know if it's worth the price, quite frankly, these days, but we come here because we care about our students. As I've said, I'm a former teacher, I've been teaching in Orange County since 2016. I'm now working for another city council member up in Irvine, but, you know, the classroom is always where I have been and where my heart is, and when I ran for this board, it was students first. So when I see, hey, $750,000 for our students, to push them through one of the best community college systems, not just in the state, but in the nation, that's what I think about when I think about these things. And of course, just knowing the amount of community impact that this project would have, even though we, as trustee Jamal said, we're not a land use regulatory body, it does mean a lot for you to come out. I just hope that you understand that where we're coming from, our students first, not, hey, let's develop that piece of land over there. So I thank you so much for coming out here, and I'm going to defer to our president here if they have any comments.
I, oh, I want, want me to say first, or do you want to speak first?
Well.
Okay.
I just also thank you for all coming, but I have to say a few, I really thank you for coming, and it really has been an incredible learning experience for me, and I'm a research biologist, and I've really enjoyed doing the research on this. So I just have to say, this was in my speech, Saddleback was just recently ranked in the top 10 community colleges in the nation, it's number eight. Irvine Valley College is ranked number, in the top 15 community colleges in the nation. The Saddleback College is number one in post-grad salaries in all the 44 community colleges in Southern California, number one nursing program in the nation. IVC is number one transfer in the state. Saddleback College is number six, and IVC is ranked for the fourth year in a row, great college to work for. So these colleges, these trustees really do care about our students. We love our students, and the students are really incredibly well-served here, and we just, we all want in our hearts our students to really do the best that they can be. I'm an alum of Saddleback College too, so I love the college. So thank you so much for all coming, and we just want to work with you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Are there other trustees that would like to discuss right now? Okay, people are getting tired, I don't blame you. Well, we've had a very vigorous discussion this evening. One of the things that I've always thought about our schools is the word "community." I'm dedicated to certain communities within the grades, within the things, such as student veterans, you know, but community means so much, and we are a community school, and we are your school, and the, when I came here in 2020, I'm going to really sound like my friend and colleague, Mr. Dak, but I said, you know, I'm here because of students. I taught for 40 years in every grade from kindergarten through community college, so I know about lots and lots of students, and where they go, and where they come from, and where they go after that. And it, it's hurtful a little bit that we're not going to perhaps be able to help them in this way, but we'll have to continue, if that turns out to be the case, to find other ways to help them. We are being, we do have a lot of funds that are being taken away in the current climate of the country, and so that makes this even harder, but we're the community school as well as the communities within the school. So I want to thank you all for coming. I'm a speech major, and I absolutely love debate, and not the booing, but the logical reasons, and there were, there were just excellent reasons and excellent passion, and it's been, it's been interesting. It's time to repeat the motion and have us vote. Oh, good, thank you so much, because I can't, I was going to have to figure, good, that's what I was hoping. Could we repeat the motion before?
We can move forward to a roll call vote.
Okay, let's do that then.
It needs to be a roll call?
I hope I'm on the right agenda, I think so.
Does it need to be a roll call?
No.
Yeah, no, I hope I'm on, when they bring it up, I hope I'm on the right screen. Yeah, yes, it's on the right screen, yes. Sorry.
Like to announce, please, there are seven votes for yes and no votes for no. But also, there was one no vote from the student trustee, Mr. Leonard, okay, so.
Oh, no, no, no. He meant to vote yes, he meant to vote yes.
He's clarifying that he meant to say no to the agreement, to terminate it, so he wants to change. It was to the motion, okay.
Well, they can fix it.
He's a Marine.
Okay, all right, so thank you very much.
President. President Inman, maybe a five.
Yeah, let's have a five-minute break, please, and then we'll do the rest of our meeting, starting at 8:30. Okay, we are on 4.1 oral reports. Trustee Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam President. So September was a busy month with friends and family in town, a lot of work with clients and nonprofit board activity and events. Now it's back to trustee commitments, starting with our meeting tonight. I also look forward to attending the opening ceremony tomorrow for the Saddleback College Multicultural Center. As we roll into fall, it's nice to reflect upon all the great achievements of our current and former students, as well as the colleges themselves. It seems that just about every day, I come across someone who attends or has attended Saddleback College or Irvine Valley College, and has fond memories of their time on the campus, and the positive impact it's made on their lives, that will certainly enhance their future opportunities and life choices. To think that our colleges have that kind of personal impact for students is really astounding and heartwarming. One example is a former student who I ran into at Trader Joe's, who said her educational and college experience literally set her on a completely different path, and one that she thought was nearly impossible. She has since transferred to a four-year university, and when she graduates, she'll be the first one in her family to obtain a four-year college degree. She is encouraging her siblings and other family members to take that leap of faith and follow in her footsteps. What we do is not just transforming individual lives, but transforming families, which in turn transforms communities. And that concludes my board comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Dak.
No report.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. On September 18th, a few of us got to attend the OCBC First Responders Dinner and Awards. I think this is the third or fourth one I've been to, and I just can't get over the stories. When they're giving away the awards and how they earn the awards, the heroism from police and fire, and lifeguards, and EMTs is just, it's just powerful to hear those stories. So it was a really nice event. And then I got to attend on the behalf of the district, the Tustin Public Schools Foundation Dinner. I get invited that in three hats as an employee of the district, as a community college representative, and this year as Mr. Tustin, and they made sure to point that out at least twice. But it was really nice, they gave a huge shout-out to our district, and to President John Hernandez and IVC. It was, it was really nice, the presentation and how they applauded us for being partners with them, and so I was happy to be there. And that's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Milchiker.
I did, I was able to brag about our two schools to the huge audience, which is really good, so I don't have to say it again now, but I did attend the South Orange County Economic Coalition Luncheon, and then, of course, with TJ, trustee Prendergast, and the chancellor, the Orange County Business, and trustee Inman, the Orange County Business Council First Responders Dinner, and our police, police department from both colleges, the chief of police from both departments were there too, so that was great. I attended Irvine Valley College Professor Lisa Alvarez's delightful book launch, and her book is a great read. I attended the Veterans Health and Wellness Launch at Irvine Valley College. Our vet healthcare professionals and I learned that vet parents and children in divorce and custody case disputes are under incredible distress, so timely therapy saves these vets from suicide or even murder. And also, this therapy saves their children from lifelong trauma, because it's very, very tough on the parents and the children, and the judges make so much difference in the way they treat these vets that are having these terrible situations. I also went to the IVC Hub grand opening, where I found that IVC professors, classified professionals, administrators are benefiting from an innovative center focused on student success. IVC photographer Ace Kagua graphics were incredibly enchanting, and you'll find the hub's resources on the IVC website, and there's lots and lots of activities that you can join. I attended the Saddleback College homecoming. I brought a friend and neighbor, and she brought her daughter that attended Saddleback College for two years and was a cheerleader here, and when we got there, we found that the former ASG president, Chris Swazza, was there too, and my friend's daughter transferred her to her dream school, University of Southern California, and Chris transferred to his dream school, USC, which seems like they would be great rivals, but they really got to, they even left, they left together, so that was a really successful evening, and the Bobcats won 54 to 14. Our district also generates $2 billion.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, okay, that's it, thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
I attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition Lunch at the Norman P. Murray Center in my home city of Mission Viejo, where it was announced, and we already know that the Mission Viejo will be hosting Team Netherland, so we're very excited about that. Kudos to the city of Mission Viejo and the council members who are there. I also want to remind people of the Saddleback College Foundation Gala, I think happening on October 11th. And by the way, I was outside proselytizing for it with the community. And I think you're going to get a number of attendees who will, who said they would show up, so let's, you know, let's see if that happens. And the last thing is, I'm, many of us are curmudgeons, me, myself included, I go to the same person to cut my hair for the last 20 years, but I decided to do a variant, and I went to a salon, and there was a young man in there, and he. in there, and he cut my hair. And it turned out, he was very meticulous, that he was a recent graduate of the Saddleback College Cosmetology Program, and he told me, he was 19-years-old, he's already actively, you know, cutting hair, and that he was impatient, he didn't understand, he really wants to own a salon and he needs to do it now, and I told him, "You're 19, you'll, you'll get there." So, we're also providing ambition, so it was great, really great. By the way, how does it look, TJ?
It looks?
You really want me to answer that? Wait, the student, oh yeah, it's amazing, it was a student, yeah, sure. Man, I was pointing person.
He wants to add something else.
I forgot one thing. Trustee Jamal earlier mentioned, kudos to our chancellor, you know, for the last three years, no mistake, that in the last few years that we've been top schools. I just want to make sure credit is credit due as well. Our two presidents have done an amazing job, and, and so, I meant to throw that in there when I was talking about that, but, but it is not a, it is not a mistake that you guys have been around through that, and, and we definitely want to make sure you're notarized for that.
Okay, I will give a short report. I like to go to a lot of things, but I like to focus on, on one usually each time to give it a little bit more attention. And this time I want to focus a little bit on the veterans' health and wellness, and I agree with others who have talked about it, but then, it kind of went over into the Walk of Hope, which is for suicide prevention. And that was one of the most inspiring things I've been to in a really long time. I talk sometimes about being a communication major, and I've always said, what is, there are four ways to communicate, speaking, listening, reading, writing, what's the most important? And people usually say, "Oh, it must be like my English class, it must be writing, or it must be reading." They're all wrong, it's listening. Listening is the most important, and that's what they were talking about. They were talking about listening when people say something like, "I don't know, living isn't really all that important," or, you know, they, they gave examples. That's not just an offhand statement, that could be something that, that we need to, we need to respond to. And so often I hear people say, especially with national things and whatever, "Well, I'm only just one person, what can I do?" Well, what can I do, what can any of us do, is to listen to our friends and colleagues and listen for, for times when they need help, and we're the one that they set it in front of, so we're the one that can help them. And that's, that's what they were saying. The speaker was Orlando Ambreeze, and he told a really powerful story with his challenges and, and so forth, and, you know, I think often that we don't do enough for our veterans and we owe them so very much. And it's nice to say, "Thank you for your service," I've done that, people appreciate it, but actively doing things other than just words is important too, and that's all for me. Student trustees, speaking of, "Thank you for your service."
I'm gonna keep this very short and sweet, because I know a lot of us have sat through a lot tonight, so thank you for all of you that were able to get through that. Honestly, trustee Jamal hits on it a lot, and I can't agree more about living in a country and a state that allows people to actually express their rights, whether it's a compliment or disagreement with anything going on in the community, you know, being able to just express your piece. Everyone has an opinion, and we should be able to live in a place where you get to express them peacefully. Moving forward, a lot has happened in the last month, and September is pretty rough for a lot of people, especially in the United States, and I thought for a really long time about what I was gonna say about it. And actually, at my last church service, my archbishop said something that I'm gonna end this with. We, as a society, need to deal with people that we disagree with, with a lot more love and compassion, and that is all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Associated Student Government, Saddleback College President Noah Aguilar.
Hello, board, hope you all are doing well. To start my report, ASG kicked off Latinx Heritage Month with a vibrant and well-attended club rush festival featuring live music, delicious food, and opportunities for students to connect with a wide variety of clubs and organizations. I can attest, it was extremely fun. In addition to this, ASG is thrilled to announce we are launching our very own podcast. It, it's a new initiative that creates a platform for student voices, campus updates, and meaningful conversations that strengthen the connection between students and campus leadership. And then, just to wrap up my report, I would like to mention, ASG and all students are absolutely thrilled with the recent launch of our new campus cafeteria and cannot wait to see the positive impact it will have on student life.
Thank you. Student Government President from IVC, Maba Ahmad.
Greetings, members of the board. I hope you're all doing well. I'm just gonna start off with my reports. My first report is ASIVC received over 90 JC applications, which is a record-breaking number in like the history of ASIVC, so we had a lot of student engagement wanting to be involved in ASIVC. We've appointed and ratified five of those applicants, and they are now our JC officers. My second report is that ASIVC has also received 80 club prep applications, which is also another record-breaking number. So, in terms of student engagement, we're doing great. The Office of Student Life and our JC are reviewing the applications to ensure they are meeting eligibility, so that process is taking time, but it's happening. And moving forward, ASIVC will also be attending the CC, the Seesaw Conference, Student Leadership Conference on October 17th to 19th in NorCal to gain leadership skills and other networking skills with other community college students. And for ballots for ASIVC senatorial elections have closed on Friday, so that means the elected senators will be sworn in on, will be sworn in in two weeks from now on the day of our retreat. So, again, like I've mentioned in previous reports, we will be going to Lake Arrowhead on October 10 to 12, where we will be gaining leadership skills, advocacy, building community, and how, and we continue to learn how to represent student voices. That is all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
No report.
Okay. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
No report.
Faculty Association, Robert Melendez.
Good evening, no report.
Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Zoraida Queiroz. Is she here? I can't see. Okay. How about Classified Senate from Saddleback College?
Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Barnes. I would like to take this moment to say how proud I am of my fellow classified professionals. With the start of a new semester and all the energy that it usually brings, crazy energy, many classified professionals took on additional responsibilities to bridge the gaps formed by the Banner transition. This effort has required countless hours of troubleshooting, learning, adapting, and supporting one another. Despite these challenges, our team continues to demonstrate unwavering commitment to the student experience. It has been inspiring to watch how, even under pressure, the motivation to serve students with care and excellence remains at the heart of everything we do. Beyond our core responsibilities, classified members are still making time to support broader campus initiatives, such as many of us are volunteering for shifts at the opening of the Multicultural Center tomorrow, that's at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the quad and CC 104, please come. Others will be touring ATAP and the New Summit Restaurant. We will also be having informal potluck inspired by Filipino culture on October 15th and encourage as many folks to complete the Foster Allied Training on November 7th and November 14th. Please see any Classified Senate representative for more details. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Thank you. California School Employees Association, Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening. I want to take a moment to echo the meaningful words of my colleague and fellow leader, Georgina, and to extend heartfelt gratitude to all of our credible classified professionals. Each day they show up with unwavering commitment to our students and to their success, often navigating challenges with resilience and determination. As we know, Banner has presented obstacles, but it was our classified professionals who have been in the trenches, problem-solving, finding workarounds, and continuing to keep student needs at the center. Despite the difficulties, they have responded not with frustration, but with care, collaboration, and a hopeful spirit. This preservase, excuse me, perseverance represents the strongest part of who we are as a community. I would like to sincerely thank our vice chancellors, Chris McDonald, Anne Marie Gable, and Cindy Viscochil for their continued support as we work through this transition together. Their partnership has been vital in helping our classified professionals meet these challenges head-on. This fall, I renew my personal commitment to vision 2035 to strengthening our workplace culture. I believe deeply that we are all in this together. Our classified professionals embody this truth. They continue to show up for one another and for students with compassion, collaboration, and hope. Thank you for hearing our voices, for standing alongside us, and for growing with us as we move forward with purpose and care.
Thank you. Trustee Rydel, would you like to make a report?
For our sake of time, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now at Board Agenda Item 5.1, the SOCCCD Public Hearing to Enter Into a Grant. What? Oh, I'm s-
Grant of easement.
Oh, everybody got excited. Grant of easement with the Irvine Ranch Water District for Advantech Corporation North American Campus at the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Before we have the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Anne Marie Gable will provide an introduction.
Thank you, President Inman. The agenda item allows the public to provide the board with comments and input before the board considers approval of granting an easement with the Irvine Ranch Water District for utility purposes at Advantech Corporation's North American Campus at ATAP. If you have any questions throughout this public process, public hearing process this evening, both Medhany, Ephraim, and I are here to assist.
Board Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Is there any public testimony? Does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this Okay, the public hearing is now closed. What? Did you?
I did, I read the item.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
No, it's all clear.
Oh, okay.
He was making a point, he read the item.
Making a point that I've read the item.
Oh, okay, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Okay, 5.1 is concluded. We will now move to Item 5.2, the board's approval of Resolution Number 25-11, which approves entering into the Grant of Easement over a portion of ATAP for utility purposes.
So moved.
Okay.
And then, I just want, kind of related to the item, but, because I live over there and drive, that building is going up fast.
Oh.
It is crazy, they're gonna need water soon.
Yes.
She says yes, I knew that. Okay, can we vote, please? The item carries on a 7 to 0 with student trustee also voting yes. It's time for resolutions, trustee Prendergast.
Agenda Item 6.1, a resolution recognizing Suicide Prevention Month, whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awarenesses around the issues of suicide prevention. It teaches how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. Therefore be it resolved, the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees declare the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month in the South Orange County Community College District, and that all employees and students raise awareness through various initiatives, events, or programs. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Me.
On a 7 to 0 with student advisory also voting yes, the item carries.
Item 6.2, a resolution recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic Heritage Week was first designated in 1968 by US President Lyndon B. Johnson and expanded by US President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to a 31-day period from September 15th to October 15th in order to recognize the contributions of Hispanic Americans to American society culture. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby recognizes Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2025, and encourages all students, staff, faculty, and members of the public to honor the transformative contributions that have been made to our community.
So moved.
Second.
The vote, the motion carries on a 7 to 0 vote with student advisory vote of yes as well.
Item 6.3, a resolution recognizing Undocumented Students and Undocumented Students Action Week. Whereas the South Orange County Community College District, SOCCCD, comprised of Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College, is committed to providing an open and welcoming environment for all students, therefore be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District declares October 13th through 17th, 2025, and every third week of October thereafter as Undocumented Student Action Week, to work in partnership with other organizations, the California Community Colleges, and the County, Community College League of California, to engage in activities supporting undocumented students.
So moved.
I saw, it went away, but I saw it, it carried.
It's from the last one.
Oh.
It pops up. Did you vote?
Okay, I, I thought I had.
There it is.
Okay. The motion carries, 7 to 0 with student also voting yes. That brings us to 7, which is Board of Trustees and the chancellor. 7.1, Board Policy Revision for Review and Study.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
Is the board policy, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, there was a bit of discussion.
Your mic, your mic.
I was gonna ask about, there was something in it about Brown Act and about serial meetings, and one of the items, it said in there, I don't have to break from me, because I didn't get to that, I don't, but it said that, that if truly from the community speaks to a board member, you're not allowed to speak to another board member, and that's the way I heard it.
Turn on your mic.
Thought that wasn't probably something in the Brown Act, so.
Where does it say that?
I don't know, let me, which, which is the agenda item again?
7.1.
7.1.
Was it in one of the exhibits?
It was, it was on one of the board policies.
Which exhibit?
I thought I wrote it down here.
Which policy?
Sorry.
Board Policy 2720.
Communications among board members.
H.
Did you find it?
Yeah, it was communications among board members, which item was that?
2720.
7.1?
2720.
What?
2720.
2720.
It basically speaks to having a serial meeting, that's what, that's what it's about.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll go over it with you later, it's okay, never mind.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion?
But it doesn't say that, Marcia.
Oh.
I'm just reading that.
Why can't I find it? I look it for it on my computer, because that's where.
Trustee Jamal.
I'm just looking at 20, if it's 2720, it basically says you can talk to public in any manner that you want, and could be all of us that talk to them on separate conversations. That's perfectly allowable on social media. But, but if it's done in a, in response to a matter within the jurisdiction of the board that another member of the board has made, posted or shared, then that's not allowed.
I, I, what I thought it said was, in reading it, because I read all the agenda items, of course, I thought it said that, you, you know, you're not allowed to converse between another board member on items, but I thought it said from a community member speaking to a board member.
It's a little clunky written, I just read it again, could be written a little tighter.
Okay.
Okay, is that all then?
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, then, let's pull it and just ask the policy committee to bring it back.
It's for reviewing study.
Yeah.
It's a little confusing.
So, that'll be next time, we'll take another look at it.
Okay.
Okay, seven, oh, right, reviewing study, so we don't vote. By any?
No, we do.
We do? Okay, sorry. Let's vote, ah, it's right there.
That's the wrong item. It said 6.3.
Mine says 7.1.
Mine says 6.3.
Moved by Jamal, seconded by Bartlett.
I think we have voted, right?
Mm-hmm, it says voting in progress.
Okay, I never, mine just said 6.3 and I closed it, nothing came up.
They said that re, refresh thing up in the corner?
See, I know about the refresh.
Yeah, mine popped up 6.3, I had to close it and hit refresh.
Right.
Oh, it's 6.3. Yeah, hers is showing 6.3.
So close it and then refresh, and then it'll pop up.
Okay. Now, we're gonna do this refresh thing, oh, here we go.
Oh, I have the, I have the item, okay, I, I have it here. Oh, well, we'll, we'll talk about it later then, okay?
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Do you want me to tell you now, or should we just move on? Okay, I found, I found it actually in my, in my notes, actually, here it is.
Is it that item, 2720?
2720, yeah, yeah. It says communi, communications, and I, and I wrote it out. It says Communication Among Board Members, No Other Person Shall Make Serial Communications, that, that's what it said, it says Communication Among Board Members, No Other Person Shall Make Serial Communications to Board Members. So I said, what about the chancellor talking to board members, staff talking to board members about the agenda item? Or wish, if, if there's an item that other members want to talk to a board member about a particular item, I'm not sure if that's correct, because is this part of the Brown Act? That, that, somebody that not on the board cannot talk to the board?
So what they're saying is, like, members of the community, that you can't be like a conduit to a serial meeting. So, let's say a community member speaks to one board member, and they find out kind of the stance of that board member, but then they go to the other board member, another board man, another board member kind of says, this is how, it looks like the vote's gonna go. That becomes a serial meeting. Of course, you can speak with me, I can't then share, this is how you're gonna vote, this is how they're gonna vote, but of course, I could speak to you about it. But you know what, it looks like we could, it looks like we're gonna revisit this. The language is to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, to make sure it's clear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
Yay. Oh, alrighty.
At least he looks good.
The motion, the, the issue is carried, please, seven votes yes, as well as student trustee. All right, 7.2. Just a second. Well, Biennial Ethics Training, Chancellor and Trustee Travel, Trustee Compensation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved by trustee Milchikur and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
It's, it's a very simple one question discussion. It says in here that there, nobody knows why Orange County, why the Ranch.
Mine. It says.
There it goes, okay, thank you. Okay, I mean, this is just something kind of background lore, not important, but anyway. It says that, it says that nobody knows why the Ranch to Santiago Com, Community College District not included in the report for reasons that are not known for other districts. I know the reason, and that you could pay me to tell you the reason. Okay, the reason is there was a disgruntled trustee from Rancho that went to the grand jury and asked the grand jury to do this, and they, he, he excluded Rancho from the, from this particular request to, to have the other boards have to do, the other three community college districts in Orange County have to do this reporting for the, for the trustees. So, that's the background, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, is there any other discussion on 7.2? Okay, let's vote, please. The vote, the motion carries with a seven to zero vote of yes, plus the student trustee. Okay. Number eight, Presentations, There Are None. Yay. We had the presentation, a big one. Did that. Number nine, Consent Calendar. Does anyone want to pull an issue? Trustee Bartlett.
9.7.
9.7.
And I have 9.12.
9.12. Any others?
Can I move the balance of the items?
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Rydel to move the items except for the two that were pulled. All in favor, let's vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote, plus student trustee. Okay, Consent Calendar, trustee Bartlett, 9.7.
Thank you, Madam President, so 9.7 on the exhibit. And I, I know we need to list all of the change orders and revised contracts, which is great, but I think we're listing every contract, because that exhibit is 99 pages. Is there a way to condense it down just to the pertinent change orders and revisions?
Just change orders.
So, we are listing every single purchase order that has been issued, and that is under the, I would say advisement of our legal counsel, that the board has to ratify all of the purchase orders, and in order to do so, then we need to list them. So, it's 99 pages, because we do it in two different ways. So each exhibit is 49 pages, the first one is in numerical order by purchase order, and then the second one is in order by amount. So unfortunately.
I read the reports.
Yeah.
My recollection, you came to this board and asked us which way we wanted it, and we said both, and now we may want to rethink that.
That would be fabulous.
It's a lot to go through.
My, my advice is pick one, I, I pick amount, because I like to go by amount. That's what I do.
Do we want to do a thumbs up on that?
I mean, that's how I feel about it.
Thumbs up, thumb down?
What, to? By amount.
By amount.
Okay, sure.
But now it'll only be 49 pages.
So you guys are providing direction that in the future you want your purchase order and contract listing to be by amount only?
In descending order.
Yeah, it goes in descending order, that's how it works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, you got it, you'll see it in October.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll, with that, I'll move the item.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna move the item.
Wait.
She moved it.
She moved it, would you like to second it?
Second, I'll second that one.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Milchikur for 9.7, vote please. Thank you. I saw it, thank you, with help from my friend here. The motion, 9.7, has carried seven votes yes, plus the student trustee. Alrighty. 9.12.
I'm, I'm going to move the item, because I actually meant 9.13, which is the agreement between the city of Tustin and our district. So, we already passed that, so I will ask Vice Ch, Vice President, Vice Chancellor Gable to explain the little technical questions I have in that item. So I move the item 9.12.
Okay, second.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Milchikur and seconded by trustee Pendergast. Let's vote, please. 9.12, 9.12 has carried, seven votes yes, plus the student trustee. Okay. Let's move then to Business Services. Area number 10, 10.1, SOCCCD, CCFS 311, Annual Financial and Budget Report.
I move the item.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Milchikur and seconded by trustee Bartlett.
I, I have just one technical question. It, it's a lengthy report and very interesting, but when are the various reports due in Sacramento? This one is due to the chancellor's office, the various budget reports. I know they're due at different timeframes, and I just think I have to have a good feeling about when they, when they're due.
This one is due on October 10th.
Yeah, it says October 10th, but then, the, the, the former budget was due on, on, on August the 31st, right, on the end of August, right?
The adopted budget has to be approved by the board by September 15th.
Yeah, that's right.
But since we don't have an early September meeting, we take our adopted budget to the board at the end of August. And so that way, we're meeting that September 15th deadline.
Okay, because we voted on it at the, at the end of August, and it again now.
So what we're, what we're voting on now is really approval of the report that we're submitting to the chancellor's office that has both our year-end numbers in it for 2425, as well as the adopted budget. So it reflects the adopted budget that you guys already approved, and we're just putting it into the state's format.
Okay.
But you're also approving all the other reports that are part of the 311, so the 50% law, the lottery, the GAN is in there, although the GAN is a separate item that was under consent.
Was, was.
It has the EPA funding in there and how we're using that funding. So there are several other reports within the 311 that you guys are adopting by this action.
That clarifies it for me, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Let's vote. The motion carries on a seven votes yes. Seven to zero vote with the student trustee also voting yes. 10.2, Authorization to Enter Into Donation Agreement for Irvine Valley College Liberal Arts Room 200, Naming Rights, Jeannie Agassi and Beatrice Tseng.
So moved, and I would like to make a comment.
Me too, I'll, I'll second, I'd like to make a comment also.
All right, let's start down here, please.
Knowing the immense contribution that Jeannie Agassi, Beatrice Tseng have given to the college, why just one room? Why not the whole building?
You're right.
Like, this is, like, when I read this, I'm like, they get a room?
They'll let you respond, but I had a thought on that. Just a clarification, which I agree, it's generous. Was the donation $35,000?
I think.
Or did I misread that?
I think it's $50,000.
It's a total of $50,000 between the two.
Between the two, that's what I, that's one of my questions.
So one of them was $35,000, the other one was $15,000?
Yeah.
So for a total of $50,000 between the two.
For the entire building?
No, for the room.
No, but you're, you're recommending that?
I mean, it just seems the room is tiny. I don't have the naming policy in front of me, but I do know that the board has designated certain amounts for certain types. So for example, a building would be much more than that in our board policy.
Significantly more, so I, I, yeah, a lot more. I think it's a, a good level, I frankly, sorry, I was thinking, could have even gone higher, but it's good.
I have a comment also, okay?
Yes.
Are you finished, trustee Jamal?
So for, just for reference, if the board wants to know, so for an entire building, the donation is 50% more, or the total cost of the building? In order to have a building named after it, it is $50,000 for a major, like a lecture hall or a specialized classroom. So the $50,000 donation is in accordance with the board policy 6620.
And I remember, I remember when we passed the policy, and it gave a designation for how much, but I don't remember, how much is the stadium, if they want to name the stadium, is that listed there?
Millions.
So an athletic field would be $1.5 million.
Okay, thank you, and the stadium would be more than that, okay. I, I just, what I wanted to say was, I know Professor Jeannie Agassi and Professor Beatrice Tseng, and they've been very, very generous at every single foundation event I've gone to. They are sponsoring all kinds of things, they have incredible donations. My husband and I took Professor Jeannie Agassi's Spanish class, that was together, that was the first Spanish class we took here at the district, and she's a superb teacher, she wrote a book. They're very well-respected Spanish teachers. I remember when we hired Professor Tseng, and she was, she teaches Spanish, she was from South America. It was, it was just an interesting story, and we were very lucky to get her, and we worked hard to get her, and it was very fortunate that we got her as a professor. What were you gonna say? And then, and then, the thing I didn't really understand, they're very generous, and they're wonderful people, and they're, they really are a great asset to our college. And, and Professor Tseng is still teaching, but Jeannie has retired a while ago, but she's still donating incredible amounts. I didn't really understand, because it says, the, the, the room is gonna be called the Agassi Tseng Spanish Classroom. But then it said, this agreement was signed and paid for by Professor Agassi. Then it says there's a second agreement by Professor Tseng, but what's the difference between those two? One seemed like it was a naming agreement, and one was just a foundation, was, was that what it was?
No, they're both, they're both naming agreements. And so the, the first agreement is with Professor Agassi, and that's the $35,000.
Okay.
And that's Exhibit A, and then Exhibit B is the donation agreement with Professor Tseng, and that's for $15,000. And so that's where the combination of the two is how they get to the Agassi Tseng.
And, and the combined donation of the two of them was the $50,000, which was the naming of the room, and that's why it's named for both of them.
Correct.
And we really fought to get Professor Tseng out of, out of South America, it was, so it was a really good move on the district's part, okay? Thank you.
I was just gonna only add that it is a large classroom, and it's of special meaning to them, because it is the designated Spanish classroom.
Good, thank you.
Sounds like the perfect choice, good job.
Yes. Very, very grateful to these people.
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote, please. The motion carries, seven to zero with student advisory of yes as well. 10.3, Irvine Valley College Sub-Award Agreement with Concordia University of Irvine.
Move the item?
Second.
And I have one comment, it seems like a great opportunity for Irvine Valley College, but is there anything else that we should know about this grant agreement? Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
I didn't, I didn't get who moved and seconded.
I think I moved it.
I have a second.
Okay, so Milchikur and Bartlett, please, let's now vote. The motion carries with a seven votes of yes, plus the student trustee. 10.4, Award of Architectural Services Agreement and HS and BGS Buildings Elevator Modernization and Addition Project at Saddleback College, Harley Ellis Devereaux Corporation. Is there a motion? Somebody?
So moved.
It's been moved by.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved by trustee Dak and seconded by trustee Jamal. Is there a discussion, yes, trustee Bartlett?
So, for these types of projects, do we get an engineer's estimate? So we know that with the respondents, that they're kind of in the right range?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is it possible to put that in here, into the agenda item?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Let's vote, please. The motion, the motion carries on a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes as well. 10.5, Irvine Valley College Sub-Award Agreement with Concordia University Irvine. We did that.
And there is no 10.5.
No 10.5, that's the old one.
Okay. All right, number 11, Human Resources. All right, number eleven, human resources. Chancellor Viscael, are there changes?
Yeah, there's a change to this one. The change is on eleven point F point one. Let me grab it really quick. We just had the wrong date for Mr. Hurlebutt. He's the director of facilities, he is retiring. We need to correct the agenda to his start date of November tenth, two thousand eight, which means he has a total years of service of seventeen years and one month. I also have a readout. You will be asked to approve the contract tonight of Dr. Linda Hall. Her contract dates are September eighth, twenty twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, Range twenty, Step seven, Annual Sari two forty-two, five oh eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the item with the amended date.
And I'll second that with the amended date.
It's been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Milchuker. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just have to mention that Jeffrey Hurlebutt, who is the gentleman that Vice President Visca, Vice Chancellor Viscael spoke about, has been the director of facilities at Irvine Valley College, and he's retiring after seventeen years of outstanding service. And if you just look at the campus of Irvine Valley College, after seventeen years, it's incredible, and it's the best campus for Irvine Valley, for the location that it can be, so he's done great work for the college. So we thank him for all his work and at the district. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Let's vote, please. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with a yes also from the student advisory. Okay. Eleven point two, classified personnel actions, ratification, regular items.
There's one change to this. It's A one J, under new personnel appointments. My staff neglected to put the title of Luciana Sandalonghi. The title should be Child Development Assistant. Thank you.
Move the item as amended with new title.
It's been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Jamal. Is there any discussion?
Just, just one more retirement. There is a custodian, his name is Robert Florney, and he's been the custodian of IVC for thirty years, and I'm sure he must be outstanding, since he worked for us for thirty years. I'm sorry I didn't know him. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. The motion carries seven yes votes, plus the student advisory. Area eleven, nothing at this point. Number thirteen, information items. Thirteen point one, Teachers of the Year Ceremony. Thirteen point two, Facilities Plan Status Report. Thirteen point three, Monthly Financial Status Report. Thirteen point four, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. Okay, oral reports. All right, first of all, Chancellor, Dr. Juliana Barnes.
I need double time to say no report.
All right, how about President Dr. John Hernandez? President Dr. Elliot Stern?
I only want to remind the board that our multicultural event tomorrow is from ten to two. We hope you'll join us if you are able, but most importantly, the ribbon cutting for the new multicultural center, its name will be announced at that time, is at eleven o'clock. So if you can only attend one thing, please be present for the ribbon cutting at eleven. Thank you very much, no other report.
Thank you. Number four, Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services, Dr. Chris McDonald.
No report.
Okay. Number five, Human Resources, Dr. Cindy Viscael.
No report.
I'm declaring a, a trend. Number six, Vice Chancellor of Business, Dr. Anne Marie Gable.
No report.
No report. Alrighty, well, guess what? It's time to go back to closed session.
Yay. Are we gonna have to report out?
And will there be report outs? There will be report outs afterwards. All right, it's time to report out. Trustee Prendergast.